Called order, this Village of Green Hills Regular Council Meeting for October 23rd, 2018. Clerk call the roll.
I'm sorry. Mr. Halter?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Hermes?
Here.
Ms. Walther?
Here.
And Ms. Metz?
Here.
And I'm here.
And Mayor. Of course.
Okay. All right. We have a prayer by Maria Walther.
Lord, we ask you to send your Spirit of servanthood upon all of us gathered here this evening to do your work for the benefit of all in our community. We ask you to bless our elected and appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Bless the members of our community who come here to speak before council so they state their cause with honesty and humility. Lord, we ask you to bless us all and that everything we do here tonight will move you to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. We ask this in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have approval of minutes for the September 25th Regular Council Meeting and the October 9th Work Session. Comments or corrections? Okay, hearing none. The minutes stand approved. Okay, this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, come forward to the lectern, give your name and address. State your comments or questions. This is not intended to be a dialogue with council or village staff. If you have questions, questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for a response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to three minutes. Anyone? No, all right. Moving on, reports of village officials. Municipal Manager Acting, Chief Hurdleman.
Thanks, Mayor. The Water Main Project is now underway and it hit a bit of a snag this week that we've been dealing with. The streets involved in this are in the I and J sections and it's going to continue on for a number of months. And final paving of the impacted streets are going to occur this spring. We started hearing complaints from residents on Joponica and other areas where the waterworks is working that they didn't know that the project was going to occur. And at the pre-construction meeting, we were told that the waterworks would be sending letters to all affected properties and the contractor was going to be doing door-to-door hangers before they started. We found out that there was apparently an IT glitch, is what waterworks told us, and they did not realize it until late last week. And the notification letters were processed on the 17th, so they should be received by the residents soon, if not already. And the impact will be on, as I mentioned, Ireland, Ilona, Joponica, and Junefield. The installation began back on October 1st and it will be completed all the way on up through May of next year. They're going to be working Monday through Friday and we've talked with them about the communication. They are going to maintain access for residents. And if anyone is concerned and might be listening, we do have phone numbers to contact the waterworks to let them know and we'll pass along any concerns that you might have to them. On another note, leaf collection has already begun. That began back on the 7th and that will continue through the week of the 25th and actually end on Wednesday, November the 28th. Reminder that no loose leaves will be picked up after that end date on November 28th. And just some important reminders about the program, not to rake leaves into the storm or street sewers as it can cause flooding. Raked leaves must be in between the street and the sidewalk for the leaf truck to be able to pick them up. And mixed piles, which might include twigs and branches, will not be picked up as they can clog and damage our leaf machine. And we ask that people not park in front of the large pile of leaves. And as an alternative to all our residents, Romke will pick up bagged leaves with normal garbage pickup. And back to the waterworks for a moment, most of you that have traveled on Winton today know that we had a rather large water main break that occurred very early this morning. Waterworks has been on the scene all day. At last look, about a half an hour ago, they were continuing to work and hopefully they'll have those repairs completed soon. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks. And one note on the work in the J and the I section. If those people who didn't know what was going on, this is another time to give a plug to the journal, to be sure to read your journals because the manager had some, an article or maybe two articles, leading up to this. Plus, you should watch our council meetings because we've talked about it several times in the council meetings.
Chief, you mentioned there was an IT glitch that prevented the letters from going out. Did they explain how the door-to-door hangers got missed as well?
They did not. I did not. I was not aware of that question being asked, but that's obviously a very good question.
So we'll give them a hard time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Law Director Jeffrey Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. No real report tonight. There was no written report provided. There's really not much happening at the State House right now as far as bills of municipal interest, so nothing to report, but I can answer any questions if you have any.
They're all campaigning, is what they're doing.
Well, right.
Okay, Acting Clerk of Council David Lumpston.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Mr. Forbes?
Yes.
I just want to recognize you and thank Woodin and Lamping for the generous donation they gave for the Harvest Fest. And we forward some letters to that fact, so I hope that you have received or thank you very much.
Thank you. The Resolutions 2018, 20, or 29, 2018-30 and 31 were all posted as required along with the October community calendar. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Chief Police.
Back again. We really had a lot of fun at Harvest Fest, so thanks for all of the volunteers, Maria especially, that interacted with us. We had a lot of happy faces in and out of our cruisers and we purposely, since the siren was aimed right at Dr. Bender's booth, we didn't allow any siren blast to go off. But the kids did enjoy playing with the blue lights and climbing in and out of both the front and the back of the cruiser. We were also happy that our police clerk, Vanna Sekoi, won first prize for the pie. So we're happy to continue her baking skills.
I was gonna say, has she brought a sample of it to the department?
Well, I might have had a tiny sample.
She should be thanking throughout the year in preparation of the Harvest Fest.
I weighed 150 pounds when I started. As you know, you got to meet our newest officer last month. I'm pleased to report to you that as he has continued on the street, he's already received his first letter of commendation from a citizen. A citizen wrote in after he responded to a traffic crash on October 13th. Officer Ritchie responded to an accident at Junefield and Jewel tonight. I was a passenger in the car. He made the process fairly painless. What impressed me most was his compassionate approach while still conducting his investigation and doing what he needed to do. I appreciated that kind of policing. Thank you. So we're happy that he's off on the right start. We had Officer Eric Tricase attend a four-day drug investigation school and that was conducted by the International Narcotics Introduction Association and that ran from the 15th to the 18th this month. And it provided basic information to officers concerning techniques used in drug investigations and legal issues surrounding them. Officer Tricase has now completed his fifth year with us. We remind residents in the fall to be prepared for any kind of disasters and we have a family communications plan that's courtesy of our Emergency Management Agency here in Hamilton County. And you can reach that link on our website by clicking on to the October Monthly Report and all that information will be there. And as most of you know, we had an incident last night that gained some media attention and certainly our attention and concern. There was an older model blue Pontiac vibe four-door hatchback, which is a bit of an unusual car, that stopped near an 11-year-old boy in the B section, late, very late in the afternoon yesterday. The car pulled up and sighted the youth who was on his bicycle and the passenger said, "Come on, come on, get into the car." And the driver said, "Yeah, yeah." The youth fled right away, which he was in my office today and I commended him for his great response and his safe response to get away from danger. And he went and knocked on a neighbor's door for help and when he didn't get any answer there, he saw a neighbor that he knew driving down the street and he yelled for his help. And so that man immediately scoured the neighborhood for the description of the car, did not find it, was hoping to get a license plate. But we're continuing an investigation and following up on a number of leads following a neighborhood canvas. The driver of the suspect vehicle was described as a light-skinned black or Hispanic male in his early twenties with a fade-type haircut with curly hair on the top. The passenger was described as a dark-skinned black male in his twenties, wearing a black hoodie and a black do-rag. Again, the vehicle, the suspect vehicle, is an older model blue Pontiac vibe, so we ask that anyone that might see that vehicle or suspects matching that description to give, either call us at 911 or at 825-2101, or call Crime Stoppers at 352-3040. In terms of our statistics for the past month, we investigated three accidents, four crimes, and 346 other incidents. We made 554 contacts, 245 of those were dispatched, and 309 were initiated by our officers. The Department provided assistance to the public in 174 instances. We assisted other agencies 21 times and made 28 criminal arrests and 34 traffic arrests. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I might mention, I like the crime alert that you send out. Maybe kind of hold that up so the camera can see it and tell people how they can get on our list.
Yes, if you're interested in receiving any of the things we send out, we like to send out a lot of information to our residents. You'll always find it on our website and there are two easy ways to sign up for any of these. If you go to our website, there is a Contact Us section. Just tell us what you're interested in receiving. Or if you really don't want to fool with the website, just call us, 825-2101, and we'll be glad to add you to the list.
Okay, good. And also, we have a headline, Village Headlines, which gives you updates on garbage, hazardous waste items, Christmas tree recycling.
Water Works.
Water Works.
Water Works.
And this case too. So go to the village's website and click on Headline News.
It's right there on the right-hand side in the gray box.
Right.
I think it's right above or below Police Department.
Yeah, and we just need your email address and you'll get that too. So it's a good way to communicate if you don't read the journal or watch council meetings. Okay. All right, moving on. I want to thank Melanie Hermes for filling in for me at the last Regular Council Meeting. And since then, the last few days, I'd received a couple emails. One was asking about council meetings and I initially said, "Just give me a call," except I never heard from them, so I ended up just giving them abbreviated item. And today I got an email about the water, why their water was off and why the village hadn't notified them for there was low water pressure. And I asked that person to call me, but I still haven't heard from them. But I'm not a big emailer, so unless it's relatively something simple, call me. My number's available, or just send me an email and then I'll, with your phone number, and I'll call you because some things aren't so easy just to answer in a short email back and forth. For instance, the water situation that occurred this morning, the office here wasn't aware of it until I came in to inform them I couldn't get my latte at the Troubadour because they had no water pressure. And although I did notice, we had a problem when I pulled up to Cromwell and Winton and saw most of the village's water running down Winton Road. And, but here again, we knew there's a break. You don't know who all is going to be affected as to what gets fed in one direction or not. And this was over in the D section, so we have no idea unless the waterworks notifies us. And so if you do have water issues, we sometimes know about them and sometimes not. But the best thing to do is call the waterworks and they'll let you know, hopefully. And I like to encourage people to get service out of the waterworks, or if you have sewer problems, the sewer district, because the last time I checked, the Village Green Hills residents pay more for water and sewage than to run the police department and part of the service department. So a fair amount of your tax dollars or your bill goes for those operations. So hit them up. We don't always know. We'll try to find out if you call with a question, though. All right, that's my two cents worth.
I have a question. How is that going to affect our future bill? Is there going to be a problem with it? Is it going to be a tremendous increase because they're going to be using that amount of water that has gone down the road?
No, the waterworks eats that.
Okay.
Basically, yeah. Now, there is a problem if you have a water main break past the meter to your house, then that ends, we've had some people hit with pretty good bills in the past when they've had a leak like that and didn't pick up on it right away. So, but yes, the waterworks eats that. And then how they ended up fixing it, they have vows that they can shut it down and route the water around so that they shut that down right where the break was now. And some of the feeder lines out in the village, like coming back to my house where I am because I'm on a dead-end street, if the water break is up by burly, I'm out of water until they get it fixed. But here, they could reroute it. And where the break was is the main line running through Green Hills, down through the park to the water tower, I think, over in, I forget where it is, over near Chiviet or somewhere. Can't remember exactly. And it runs to this tank up in Forest Park. Okay. Moving on, we've got the Committee Reports, Service and Streets.
Did you have court receipts?
No, I didn't get them.
Okay, all right.
Do that and then next one.
All right, got it.
Okay. At our meeting on October 17th, we discussed the equipment replacement schedule and repair schedule. Yvonne was going to get a copy for everybody, but I'm not sure if everybody got one, so I'm gonna send around while I'm talking. Just to be, make you all aware, there is a leaf truck that is due for replacement next year. It's just gonna be on the radar. It's already, apparently already budgeted and we're on schedule to replace that, but that's coming up. Additionally, we talked about the new street sign design and implementation because the street signs that are currently in use are no longer up to code, so we have to, as they fall out of commission, get them replaced. And so we're working on a design that incorporates the historic nature of the ones that we have with one that actually fits the code. So Yvonne is gonna be going to look at some different designs and get pricing models and everything for that. And the bids for getting new landscapers, new grass cutting, the request for bid is gonna be going out in the next couple of weeks. So we'll be getting some coming back so we can take a look at all those that we get. And then finally, we talked about a survey going out to the residents. So she emailed all of you a copy of it. Here's a hard copy. Take it with you. If I can get responses by this Friday so that I can get that to her and we can get it in distribution in time, we can get it back quickly and just let me know if there's any edits, any additional questions that aren't on there, anything of that like. Okay? And then next meeting is going to be November 14th at 9:00 AM.
And you said you want a comment by?
This Friday if possible, the 26th. I officially have to get her final, that final survey by the 30th, so if you're a day or two late, that's okay.
Okay, thanks. Intergovernmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First up, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to introduce the first reading of ordinance, amending the codified ordinance regarding the inspection of golf carts.
Okay.
Second it.
Okay, clerk call the roll.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Laws and rules met on Monday. The topics that we covered was relative to the shopping center signage that, you know, basically we're looking to take, taking on that task on our own since the shopping center management is kind of dragging their feet on that. We did undertake a review of the dog bite ordinance with the assistance of Lieutenant Ward relative to a couple of incidents that have occurred recently, just to make sure that what we intended when we amended that, that particular ordinance back in 2016, that it was functioning the way, the way it was, or the way we intended for it to function. Generally, the outcome was as we expected. There are a couple of things that we're looking to work out better with responding officers, but otherwise, it is as we intended. We looked at a recent update relative to the 5G cellular installations that our law director sent to us. Basically, the recent passage of House Bill 478 has been pretty much superseded by the federal government, in particular, the FCC. So it's being negotiated at a much higher level than what we would have any real input That's, and then finally, the amendment to the golf cart inspection fee, we'll discuss here a little bit later on. Some of you who weren't able to attend the groundbreaking of the new schools, school buildings, it was a beautiful day for it. We got to play with some shiny shovels and move some dirt. And, you know, it was a very, very well-attended and well-run ceremonies for, actually for both, both school buildings. And I do have the ceremony agendas if you want to take a look at that. Other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, comments or questions? I have a comment on the 5G thing. Yes, if you've checked your emails, there's been some discussion back and forth that relates to work being done in the city of Forest Park that's supposedly a 5G system piece. I guess they're putting conduit in and they'll string it with something. And one of our residents is concerned about it, wanted us to investigate why, how Forest Park can do that. But the Village of Green Hills will not be investigating Forest Park since it's a separate municipality and they have their own rules and laws and operate totally independent of what we could do or be about. So, you know, they possibly don't understand how governments operate here in Ohio totally. But, you know, 5G is coming. I don't see any way, especially if the federal government is pushing for it, that it's not going to happen. And frankly, I sort of look forward to being able to control traffic lights and other things with it and having autonomous vehicles. So I'll put my two cents worth in and say, you know, I'm in favor of it. So if that person doesn't agree with me, so be it.
I look forward to the chief arresting an autonomous vehicle.
Yes.
Good luck with that.
Right.
We can stop.
My only big concern is hacking, but anything can be hacked. So, all right. Finance and audit, anybody want to say anything for Glenn?
We should have the meeting. I was gonna say, we should mention that he does have an excused absence.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're having a meeting on Thursday at 8:15 in the morning.
8:15?
8:15 in the morning.
Okay.
It has been announced on the website.
Okay, Community Development, Jeff Halter.
Yes, we put together a sign mock-up and I think it passed the mayor drive-by test, the official test of whether it was legible enough. And it went well. It was loosely held together, but it held together long enough to get a good idea of placement and angle, and so we recorded that information. Quote packages have gone out to sign companies and I believe they're due back on November 1st, so we should be able to get some new signage, which will be a good thing. Also attended the high school and middle school groundbreaking. That was well-run. I thought it was really a nice event. And, let's see, what else? Just that we'll have a community development meeting on November 21st at 5:15 PM. And that concludes my report.
Any comments or questions?
I also drove by and it looked really good.
Okay, Safety, Melanie Hermes.
I have sent out an email to those on the committee and those who come to the meeting to see if we can get a meeting scheduled for in November. As soon as I get some response, I will make sure the clerk of courts knows so we can adequately post it. Other than that, I was driving home from vacation on Saturday night and right as I drove into the village, there was a police cruiser helping pull a branch out of the street from the high winds. We pull into our garage and immediately a tree hits our three-season room. No damage, but, so, good timing. But on Sunday, we were able to get our debris brush, tree limb and everything out and I saw other people in the neighborhood did as well. And I just want to thank the Services Department. They did a wonderful job going around and picking up the things that we all had to drag out due to the weather. So I, also, one of my neighbors commented that they did a great job when they had to have a tree removed, of helping getting the stuff rid of it, even though they had planned on, the tree removal guy was gonna come out, but they had it laid there and the crew took care of it. So just thank you for the great work and good job keeping our old trees that are getting a little bit easier to fall in the wind taken care of when it does happen.
And that was bad too because most of these trees are still loaded with leaves.
Yes.
So hopefully, we'll get the leaf collection finished by the end of November, but we need to have some more leaves come down.
My husband did make a comment of the tree limb that did fell, it was one that was laden with leaves. And then there's a couple that look sickly that didn't touch. So it just goes to show that the wind and the leaves do play a powerful force to have them come down.
I do have a comment. I know that it's on your agenda to look at putting in the sign on Chalmers for children at play. I had another resident come up and mention that, I believe it's Dewitt, I'll confirm the street name and email it to you, that also has an issue with people speeding through. And she said that there's not a children's sign or a speed limit sign. and she said that there's not a children's sign or a speed limit sign.
Okay, I'll comment on that. All the speed limit signs are posted as you enter those side streets, so no additional speed limit signs go in because by state law, all residential streets are 25 miles an hour. And then Winton Road's the exception, 35 miles an hour. So, we do not, or have not, I guess, safety, if they wanted to, to put more signs up, could consider that. The, I've been an opponent of slow children playing signs for years because in the past, we've had some highway traffic safety engineers that advise us against doing that because indirectly, you're putting a sign up, giving them basically free rein to play in the street, which is not what it's supposed to be. But if you're putting a sign up saying, "Slow children are playing," then you're indirectly saying, "Go ahead and play in the street, I've got a sign here that's gonna protect you." So, he said, "You don't want to go that way." And the other issue is if we put one up, we'll have one on every street where there's a child. And so, the key is teach your children to watch for vehicles, not play in the street. And, so that's my two cents worth on it.
Thank you.
If anybody's watching, they'll do that, but my suggestion is, we don't want to take that risk of opening ourselves. And I know that some towns have had them, and, but, you know, the speed limit's 25 miles an hour, but if you drive 25 miles an hour on Chalmers, or possibly on Dewitt, and a person's standing there, it'll seem like they're going faster than 25 miles an hour. And I know the chief has sometimes run radar in those areas. We have had issues on Burley Circle with the speed and, and some other streets, and, and a lot of times, it's the local people that live on those streets are the ones that do go over the speed limit. So, so the main thing is if they've got issues or complaints, they should call the police department and have them come out and check some things.
Could I add one thing? That's exactly correct. I was at a meeting recently where someone said, "Well, I didn't know that anyone could call and request, you know, radar enforcement or stop sign enforcement," and that's something we do on a regular basis. We get those calls, we're more than happy to send an officer out there to watch that, and then periodically go back and check that again to see if it, it remains to be a problem. And just to follow up on what the mayor stated about the children playing signs, I think one of the things that can occur is that if we put one up in one neighborhood, just like you mentioned, there'll be a request at the next street over, and then it'll be the next street over. And I think that you, as a council, would be hard-pressed to say no. If you said yes to four or five streets, then pretty soon, they're going to be on every street, which diminishes their impact totally.
And people, even though you have signs, you know, for speed or stop, people tend to sometimes not pay any attention to the signs for one reason or another. And of course, that's why then they get little greetings from some of our police officers when they don't pay attention.
And I will go ahead and make my public safety announcement. 25 miles per hour is the speed limit, and don't be a distracted driver. Don't answer, answer your phone, check email or anything like that while driving. It's unsafe, and if someone doesn't hear you, it could cause an accident and even worse injuries. So, just remember to drive safely, especially in Green Hills. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, recreation cable television, Maria Walther?
I just wanted to add something since we are at the end of October. We're going to have to switch off the time of the end of the summertime, and that's usually a good time to check the batteries of your smoke alarms, and that was going to be happening while we are not in session. So, since we're close enough to the end of October, I thought it's worth mentioning. For the recreation, I want to tell you that we had a tremendous, successful harvest fest. It's so much so that when we had a meeting with the staff, our suggestion is to move it to the commons. So, we, we have, we have been growing, we have been very successful. We had a tremendous amount of volunteer help to help us raise the bar, like as always I asked for. We had the Koller family itself, the whole family was there at all times, so was Kenny Burke. It didn't matter what time, it didn't matter what was happening, they were there. Would like to thank the Koller family, Kenny Burke, I have a best felt house, a Neil White, Dan Dusa, Chris Alger, Rob Howell, Chris Kettler, Michael Selby, Jack Lee, Dan Dorflin, Jim Miller, Sean McMillan, Kathy O'Hara, Mr. Halter did a tremendous job on, on doing the construction that we had. Mr. and Mrs. Metz were very helpful at all times with us there. Mrs. Hermes was the one in charge of entrance most of the time.
For a brief minute.
For, you know, more than a brief minute.
Brief minute.
And Ms. Davis in the office, she did a tremendous job coordinating things for us. Ms. Kovak, David Lamson, our acting clerk. And especially want to add on to a fantastic MC that we had for the doggy parade is Chris Knight. By popular demand, we would like him to, for him to come back. There was a particular time when he introduced one of the doggies, and the owner, the little boy, and says, "Well, what can you tell us about your doggies?" He likes belly rubs, and that really made everybody melt down. That was just like a tremendous highlight of my day there.
Who doesn't?
Chris Knight would be appointed next year for that particular job. He was tremendous. We would like to thank State Farm for the generous contribution for the harvest fest, as I did for the wooden lamping, and the CIC for Green Hills in memory of Jeff Hanson. I would like to ask anybody that have any suggestions of any changes or anything like that, to please contact the recreation department. If you would have something else that you would like to see, we'll see if we can produce. This year, I think it was specifically outstanding the fact that we had two bands. We had choirs that, that came to sing from Winter Woods, we had the baking contest, we had the...
Carriage drives.
Yeah, the carriage drive, but also we had, for the first time, we had the gentleman that, with the taco one.
The American Ninja.
We had, sorry?
The American Ninja.
The Ninja, we, I mean, we had so many more things. And I, if I'm, I might be mistaken, but I'm pretty sure that we passed, surpassed the 35 number of the booth, I think it was close to 40. So, that's one of the reasons why we are looking to a larger venue to expand at the, at the commons. So, thank you so much for all of you who participated and contributed in one way or another to making this a tremendous, successful event. I really thank you.
And the same to you, Maria.
Right, yes, and actually, Maria was a big contributor to this event also, so not only her hard work, but her hard money.
Well, I, I do it all in the memory of my husband, Dan Willard.
Appreciate that. All right, moving on, new business, we have Resolution 2018-32-F, resolution adopting the Hamilton County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Hermes?
I would be happy to read it, but I know we did the ordinances, and I believe ordinances, the first reading of an ordinance becomes before resolutions. Typically, we do it in our, that order, but doesn't matter?
It doesn't really.
Okay. I just know typically, I see ordinances before I see resolutions on my agenda. So, do you want me to go, or do you want to do the first read? I'll go.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll go.
Okay, all right. I have this at the end.
Okay. Resolution 2018-32-S, resolution adopting the Hamilton County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Whereas, the Village of Green Hills, Ohio is vulnerable to an array of natural, technological, and human-caused hazards that have the potential to cause loss of life and damages to public and private property. And whereas, the Hamilton County Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency and the Hazard Mitigation Steering Committee comprised of representatives from the county, municipalities, and stakeholder organizations have prepared a recommended multi-hazard mitigation plan that reviews the options to protect people and property and reduce damage from these hazards. And whereas, the village has participated in the planning process for development of this plan, providing information specific to local and county-wide hazard priorities, encouraging public participation, identifying desired hazard mitigation strategies, and reviewing the draft plan. And whereas, the Hamilton County Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency with the Hazard Mitigation Steering Committee has developed the Hamilton County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, the PLAN, as an official document of the county pursuant to the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, PL 106390, and associated regulations 44 CFR 210.6. And whereas, the plan has been widely circulated for review by the county's residents, municipal officials, and regional state, regional state and federal partner agency, and has been revised to reflect their concerns. And whereas, the Ohio Emergency Management Agency and the Federal Emergency Management Agency have reviewed the plan for legislative compliance and approved the plan pending the completion of local adoption procedures. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1, the Hamilton County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan is hereby adopted as an official plan of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section 2, the municipal manager is charged with supervising the implementation of the plan's recommendations as they pertain to the Village of Green Hills and within the funding limitations as provided by council or other sources. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Do you want me to give a brief overview as to what this is? Does council have?
I think it'd be good to at least know where, if someone wanted to review it, where they can have access to it.
They, they can contact Hamilton County, the Hamilton County Emergency Management Homeland Security Agency, to spare me from having to repeat that word salad, I'll just say Hamilton County EMA is how they're more commonly known. That agency has been working for the last several, two years or so, year and a half, in revising the all, all-county multi-hazard mitigation plan. The plan is necessary for disasters that receive state or federal emergency funding. So, for instance, whenever the governor or the president declares a state of emergency, this plan is put into action to ensure that all of the necessary steps are taken, that all municipalities and all affected people receive whatever federal or state funding they're eligible for. A big part of the plan is also highlighting areas for improvement and highlighting areas for future funding. To give you an example, generators for municipal or key structures is one of the things the village put in as part of this plan. Village attended meetings that were organized by Ohio, or Hamilton County EMA to go over some of the details and go through the process of reviewing the plan. So, it's, it's a lengthy and complicated process, but every community had an opportunity to put their touch on it and put what they prioritized into it. They also held public meetings to give people an opportunity to review it and comment on it. So, if anyone has any questions about it, they can contact our office, or they can contact Hamilton County EMA, and they'll make sure that, that they get the answers that they're looking for.
Okay, all right. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
And Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 2018-32-S passes. Next one's Resolution, Resolution 2018-33-F, making transfers from the general, general fund.
I'll read it for Mr. Lee. This is Resolution Number 2018-33-F, resolution making transfers from the general fund. Whereas, the 2018 annual appropriations that were adopted on December 12th, 2017, are to be amended, and whereas appropriations must not exceed total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705 dot 36A5. Therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources have been requested from the county budget commission. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1, that the following transfers of funds be made from previously appropriated monies from the general fund 1,000, to the swimming pool 2909, and the amount is $3,000. From the general fund 1,000, to the police 2901, amount is $11,000. Section 2, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. And I move that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments, questions? Pretty clear. Okay, clerk call the roll.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
And Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 28-33-F passes. Next resolution is 2018-34-SNS, resolution authorizing assessments on certain properties in the Village of Green Hills. Natasha?
Resolution Number 2018-34-SNS, resolution authorizing assessments on certain properties in the Village of Green Hills. Whereas, the village has given proper notice to the owners of certain real property in the Village of Green Hills regarding the removal of vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris from the properties listed below, and whereas, the owners of said properties did not take action to remedy the violations, and therefore, the Village of Green Hills contracted to remove vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris, and now seeks to collect said expenses by authorizing the placement of a lien upon the lands and collect it as other taxes. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1, that the village council hereby certifies that the costs of such labor, together with the expenses relative thereto, be filed on the return and statement to the Hamilton County Commissioners as an assessment against the properties listed and placed as a lien against the properties by the Auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio, as follows. Parcel Number 597-0060-0089-00, address 1 Drummond Street, owner Waldron, comma Tammy, with the cost of $106.67. Parcel Number 597-0030-0007-00, address of 83 Farragut Road, owner of Spa, comma Timothy L., cost of $145.67. And parcel Number 597-0012-0005-00, address of 140 Jewell Lane, owner of Hallwiler, comma Richard, cost of $155.67, for a total cost of $408.01. Section 2, all amounts collected as a result of this resolution shall be placed into the general fund of the Village of Green Hills. Section 3, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its passage. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? All right, clerk call the roll.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
And Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 2018-34-SNS passes. Okay, the next item is ordinance Number 2018, dash, what do we use here? LNR? Mending section, no?
Looks like...
There's a typo.
Okay.
Yeah. Mending section 33, 377.02, the Green Hills Codified Ordinance Regarding Inspection of Golf Carts. This will be for a first reading. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First reading of ordinance Number 2018-9-LNR, mending section 377.02 of the Green Hills Codified Ordinance Regarding the Inspection of Golf Carts. This is the first reading.
And do you want to explain what the change is?
Yeah, the, what this is doing is, is amending the section B in the fee schedule to, our police department have been involved in doing inspections on non-resident golf carts, because we've become golf cart experts, so we're just establishing a, a fee for non-residents inspections. There's a couple of verbiage amendments, but that's the primary intent of the ordinance.
Okay. All right. And we have a calendar?
Halloween, Wednesday, October 31st, 6 to 8, trick or treat, be safe. And I'm gonna tentatively put out there for Safety Committee Tuesday, November 27th at 5:15.
Whatever.
Community Development, November 21st at 5:15.
That's a Wednesday?
Yes.
Yes, I believe so.
Good.
Wednesday, November 14th, 9:00 AM, Streets and Services.
And tentatively, November 26th, Monday, 9:00 AM, for Houses and Rules.
I'm meeting at 9:00 AM with staff to start the proceedings for the next Harvest Fest. So we don't have a, the committee, yes, recreation of that, at that point, we will, my, my companion here and I will figure out a date then for the month of December.
Okay.
This one is a preliminary with staff to what we need to get together for the next year and start it to get it rolling.
And what day is that?
That is a Monday, 9:00 AM, the 26th of November.
Okay.
My aim is to get some more contributors. I would like to mention something that I would be remiss if I don't mention it. Lady from the community that has joined us very late, let's say, on this venue, and left us way too early. Lynn, who owned the Mackenzies and the shopping center here in Green Hills, was a tremendous contributor and cheerleader for the village. And her husband, following her wishes, did come and had the booth on her honor. And I was very touched by that, and very sorry for their loss, because it's also ours.
Nice lady.
Okay. Thank you, and hearing nothing more, meeting adjourned.